This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order and the Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Councilman Williams is absent today. Councilman Avery?
Here.
Echols?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present. The meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Harris to lead the invocation today. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you that you have brought us through another year and led us into 2012, and we really and truly thank you. We would like to ask you to bless everyone that's here today for whatever intentions they have. Bless them. Bless your council. Bless your city. Help us to make those decisions that are best for this city and the people of Gadsden, and we will be truly thankful to you. Continue to give us your blessings. Guide us and lead us. Bless the soldiers. Bless those in our militaries who have returned home safely from wars around the world. Bring the others home safely also, and we will continue to give you all the praise. These blessings we ask in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I clearly lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting on December the 27th.
Some move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of December the 23rd through the 29th.
Some move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation to Mayor. Perpetual is a public hearing regarding redistricting plans. This is a time and place as advertised to allow anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of ordinances amending City Code Section 3431 to revise council district boundaries. Is there anyone who would like to speak concerning any of the redistricting plans? It ended that in a hurry. Well, come up here and talk. State your name and address to the city clerk.
My name is Troy Ross and I live at 200 Elmwood Avenue in District 2, represented by Mr. Williams. We discussed the plans the other night when Mr. Williams had his district meeting. At that time, I voiced my opinion that I preferred Mayor Guyton's plan. It did, it really didn't change things so dramatically one way or the other, left the districts basically intact as they were. I was happy with three representatives representing these side of the river in some way. I like that. I mean, I think we need the more representation we can have for that side of the river, the better off we are. Mr. Williams, I'm very happy with. I have no problem with him at all. I think he's done a good job since he's been elected. And basically, I mean, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else?
One other thing. I do like it that-
Hold it. Come to the mic so we can hear.
I do like it in that it provides the district, the way it's divided, where you have the minority majority kind of thing being very close. I like that. I think it brings more competition into the races for that side. I mean, we've had white representatives. We've had black representatives. So I don't see where that's really been a problem. With time, I think eventually that district will come more and more minority. I mean, that's just the way the demographics are for that side of the river and that area. I think it makes for a very competitive race when you have one. Mr. Williams was very organized in his race the last time around. I think he ran a good election.
Thank you. Well, unfinished business.
Was anybody else there?
Is anybody else?
Nobody else.
Somebody in the shirt.
He didn't say anything.
Where? I don't see anybody.
Yeah, come on up to the mic.
Please state your name and address for the city clerk.
How you all doing?
Great. How are you?
And to the audience here, your fellow citizens of mine, I love you. Oh, Jesus loves you. I'm a born again Christian, and I believe in doing things simple. We had one gentleman on this council say, "What's the hurry? We should never hurry anything." The reason we shouldn't hurry anything is because once we do it, it may be something happened, we say, "Hey, well, we shouldn't have done that." You see, the federal government, I don't know exactly what they want to do about this. But the numbers, if you look at numbers, they look pretty good. They're not that much different as far as number, race and things like that. So I have to be for the mayor's plan because I think it's more stable in the sense of change, but I wouldn't be for changing it or any of the others. I'd leave well enough alone because as Good Lord said, "Be quick to listen, slow to speak." Don't make a decision before you have to. Look at the older people and the younger people. Let them agree. When they don't agree, we always have problems. God bless you. I appreciate you letting me speak here today.
Can you give me your name for the record?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Max Cannon, and I live in District 2.
Okay. Thank you.
God bless you all. Have a great day.
I wish that Councilman Williams was here today so he could explain his. In my opinion, there's not a lot of difference between what he is okay and the mayor's. Some minor changes. What we tried to do is what I thought was fair, and I'm not saying it's fair. I'm saying what I thought was fair was that we should have three minority districts instead of two. That's what we have now, minority majority. Mr. Williams won in what was mostly a white district. It's been tweaked now so that that will be, his district will be a majority minority. So that's my own personal feeling. And if any of the rest of these guys up here would like to explain their feelings, I'm offering it to you now.
I think Councilman Williams, kind of a compromise plan between the mayor and the plan that Councilman Avery submitted, I think it's something that is somewhere in between and kind of a compromise, and I'm certainly going to support it. I've talked with the other council people, and I think we're all kind of on the same page, just, you know, we'll do what's right and what's fair, and I think Councilman Williams' plan is that, so that's what I'm going to support.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. President, I would like to say that Councilman Williams' plan is the most agreeable plan to me, and one of the reasons that I say that is because we're leaving three districts in East Gadsden, one of the most depressed areas. Now, we can get better representation, and we can spend Bob Becker's money over in East Gadsden rather than the country club area. So we get better representation in East Gadsden with three districts. I'm going to support that 100% for three districts in East Gadsden. In addition to that, I also agree with Councilman Echols that the three minority districts in the city of Gadsden is not a bad thing for us, looking at the population that we have and the minor tweaks that we made on Councilman Williams' plan, which we all agreed, he agreed, would put his district at a very, very, very small advantage as far as minorities are concerned. It's, you know, it's like 2% or 3% difference in the white and the black population. So you do have three minority districts with his plan, which we, and you also have three districts in East Gadsden, which is the ultimate goal of this city, is to represent the people.
Anybody else? Okay.
You know, I was just sitting here waiting to hear all the, you know, the comments about the plan. It's interesting that when the mayor put his plan out and I put my plan out, everybody except me, I guess, and Councilman Williams, was very supportive of the mayor's plan. And now, all of a sudden, there is a compromise plan that Councilman Williams put out, who pretty much made three majority minority districts. And if everybody supported his plan, why did everybody have to go down and tweak his plan a little bit? You know, I can't understand that. If his plan was so good to start with, everybody had to go down and put their two cent worth in to change it. Everybody talks about how fair it is, based on population and whatever else. I didn't realize we were doing a quota system because if we did, we'd have 30% employees, minorities here in the city. We'd have 30% of our department heads minorities, which we don't. So if everybody is going to be fair, let's just be fair. Let's start doing that. I hope this council will work towards that goal, since y'all want to be fair. I think what we need to look at again is why all of a sudden Councilman Williams' plan is so great. Prior to that, like I said, again, everybody was sold on the mayor's plan. I don't see, if you want to be fair, we've got a mayor and we've got a council form of government. If you want to be fair, then let's have some shared governance, and the way you have shared governance is that you have two groups working together. So I don't see a problem with having four minority districts, and you have four minorities on this council, and you have a white mayor. I mean, that's shared governance, and that's what we've been talking about, and that's what it's all about, is shared governance in a city to make sure that the city moves forward. We talked about keeping three council people in East Gadsden. Well, we've had three council people in East Gadsden since '86. You would think that they would have already done all of that, since we had three over there, and they haven't. So I don't see where getting three and keeping three is going to make it any better at this point in time. If you don't have people who share ideology and work together, I don't care how many you have in East Gadsden. I don't care how many you have anywhere, you're not going to get anything done. And over the last 25, 26 years, it's proven that we can't work together in certain areas in this community. And the only way you're going to change that is you have shared governance. That's one of the reasons why we came up with the four majority minority plans, to share government, to share the leadership, to share moving this city forward. And until we do that, we're going to forever have problems in East Gadsden because there's always going to be a 4-3 vote on major issues. Well, let me rephrase that. There might be a 4-3 vote on major issues when it comes down to minority actions. There are several things that I've tried to do in my district, and I've got five council members butting up against my district. So if you want to share some things and help because you are there close to it, I have yet to get those five guys to support me on certain issues. So that ain't got nothing to do with nothing. It's about who you got in office and their ideology. And the reason we need those districts and the way it's set up is to make sure that the people who are representing those districts represent the people of that district and represent the people of this city, and not just a segment of it. And right now, that's what we have.
We could debate all day, I guess, but we spent more money in East Gadsden or more money has been spent in East Gadsden in the last, I'd say, two, three terms. We got a new Walmart district over there. We've got a new health center. We've got a new VHR building. We've got a new family success center. All that money that has been spent over there is probably somewhere, one of them was 3 million, one was 7 or 8 million, and I don't know what we spent in the, what do they call it? Walmart?
Town Creek.
It's a town center.
It's a town creek.
Town Creek.
Town Center. We spent about $2 million on that project. Of course, it reaped about $4 million in return the first years.
So I don't think, I don't think that we have neglected East Gadsden. I don't think we neglected Roberts District.
How much we spent on drainage in East Gadsden or my district?
Gosh, I don't know, Robert. I don't know whether drainage was most important. We spent millions of dollars on drainage, that's for sure. And I hope we spend some if you think it's necessary in your district. I'll vote for it.
I know you will.
Well, okay. I just, I'm just proud of what we've been able to do and still have money in the bank. And, you know, I'm probably so liberal that I'd like to spend some of that money that the mayor holds on to.
We are.
But the mayor-
All it takes is four votes. You can spend as much of it as you want to.
Anyway, if there's nothing else, we'll go on. Ordinance number eight is-
We're not going to-
When are we going to vote?
We're going to vote on it?
Yeah. Well, we're starting with eight. Number A is an ordinance amending City Code Section 3431 to revise council district boundaries. This ordinance was tabled for two weeks on December the 20th. This is a plan proposed by Mayor Guyton. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to the-
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is not the plan that I'm going to support.
Right. You just voted no, Bill. We're okay. We're okay.
You take the vote.
Not the one we substitute.
Substitute. We're doing just what we're thinking.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Let's have a roll call.
Okay.
And this is the mayor's plan. Everybody understands this.
Right. I want to back up on this because we had to understand upstairs that what we're going to do.
When Debrick's original plan comes up, then I'm going to make a substitution.
That's the third one.
It's the third one.
Yeah. When we get down to that one, then we'll make a substitution.
I'm sorry. Okay. Then I'm going to rescind my motion to approve because-
We got to vote on it.
Yeah. Then you're right. Now we're going to vote.
Bring it up to, bring it off the table.
The legal thing upstairs was that we were not going to vote. It would take a motion and a second, and it would be substituted. Okay.
So you're going to draw your motion.
No, I'm not going to do anything. Just hold it. I'll do my speaking. I'll speak for me. Motion stands.
Okay. This is, we have a motion and second for consideration of the ordinance approving the mayor's-
Right.
-proposed plan. Councilman Harris?
No.
Councilman Avery?
No.
Echols?
No.
Stewart?
No.
Cannon?
No.
Reed?
Due to a misunderstanding upstairs, I would have voted the other way. I'm just going to abstain on this.
Okay. The motion does not carry for adoption of this plan.
Okay.
B is an ordinance amending City Code Section 3431 to revise council and district boundaries. This ordinance was tabled for two weeks on December the 20th. This is the plan proposed by Robert Avery. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to the-
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Roll call.
Okay. Councilman Reed?
No.
Cannon?
No.
Stewart?
No.
Echols?
No.
Avery?
Yes.
Harris?
No.
The motion does not carry for adoption of this ordinance.
C is an ordinance amending City Code Section 3431 to revise council and district boundaries. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. This is a plan proposed by Debrick Williams. Minor changes have been made to the plan since this ordinance was drafted. If you want to consider the plan with the changes, you will need a motion to substitute. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I make a motion. We make a substitution there, and it will be 452.1. And I would ask for-
Second.
That we make the substitution. We have a motion and a second substitution.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor for adopting the motion to substitute, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries for the substitution.
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the substitution. That's 452.1.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. I went down to tweak the plan like everybody else. What happened to my tweak? What, I mean, somebody went down and tweaked it after I did?
I went down with Councilman Williams and went over the plan that he talked about, and we made a change that he agreed to and that we felt was fair.
He had agreed to mine, too. So you went down afterwards?
I don't know when you went, so I don't know if it was after or before.
Is this, this is what we're working on right now? It had to be afterward because that ain't what I tweaked.
But it could have been after you.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Okay. Roll call vote. Councilman Harris?
We're voting to approve.
Yes. Avery?
No.
Echols?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
The motion carries for adoption of that ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. President.
This has to go to the Justice Department for approval by them. I'm sure that Mr. Avery will send his, too.
I'm going to send mine. I'm going to send Mr. Williams, his first one, his second one, and the one I tweeted, too.
Well, I assumed that all of them would go.
Well, you know, one's coming from the council. Only one plan is going to come from the city council.
That's not true. All of them are going to be sent up by the council.
One plan approved by the city council will go to the Justice Department.
That is true.
This council has not approved anything else to leave this bill and to go to the Justice Department, except for we just voted on this.
Mr. Kirby, where would that go? How many will go up there, Mr. Kirby?
From the city council.
Any of the plans that were considered will go up there.
Thank you.
I stand corrected.
We're through with that. Let's move on.
Thank you.
This is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1310 Alabama Avenue in District 3, Milton Chapman, the Parker Company, and the state of Alabama being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Mr. President, based on the recommendation of the Building Department, I'm going to ask for a 30-day table.
Okay. Is there anybody out there who would like to speak one way or the other?
Oh, I saw him sitting there.
My name is Bill Boss. I live at 803 Slack Street. I live in District 5, and this house is in District 3. And I spoke with Mr. Harbison on Friday, and a certain event come up due to death in his family. He said it was going to come out early this morning and expect that we could. So the house is completed, and I have pictures if you guys want to see them. So I agree that we table this until the Building Department can come out and inspect the properties.
Yeah, that's why we're tabling it for 30 days. He did come by.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Did you get a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table for 30 days.
I missed two. D is an ordinance amending zoning ordinance regarding certain uses. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. This would allow barber and beauty shops in Office District. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah. Barber shops and beauty shops are allowed just about in every district except Office District, and this is just going to make it possible for them to be in that district, in that zone.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Here's a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 813 South Sixth Street in District 5. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on November the 29th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, on the recommendation of the Building Department, I would ask for a 30-day table on this.
Second.
Second. I got a second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1404 Castro Avenue in District 3, state of Alabama, Virginia Barfield, and First Family Financial Services Incorporated being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
President, I'm Brian Greer, City of Gadsden. We started this case in April 2011. There's been no improvements. There's been no permits to improve. We're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Department reports, committees, boards, are there any? New business? Is there any new business?
Mr. President, I have one item I would like to present today for unanimous consent to consider, the resolution authorizing acceptance of an M60 tank for the Patriots Park at Knockalittle Falls.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today- Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I would like to thank Angie and the mayor's office, Rick Vaughn, the Patriots Association, everybody else for the long tenure of getting this tank to where it is now, and to Kerry Payne and Parks and Rec for accepting it, and the city mayor. I think everybody's gonna appreciate it. We will maintain it. We will paint it, and that's the main thing. And thank you, Billy, for bringing it up.
And eventually, all branches of the military will be represented at Patriots Park.
That's true.
All branches, all four branches.
Any other discussion? Clark, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Are you gonna get a ship up there for the Navy?
You name little swamp boat.
Yeah, let me get a PT boat up there.
Another PT boat's gonna, they all right there.
That's pretty good-sized boat in the deal.
What we're gonna do is borrow the sheriffs, I think, on the weekends and put it up there.
You got a nice boat.
If Todd let us borrow it, the sheriff talks.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have an item. It's a Resolution 396, adopting policies regarding employment of individuals with disabilities. I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clark, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, basically, this is something we do, we have to do it every three years. It's required by the United States Department of Justice that we make sure that we don't discriminate against individuals with disabilities. So we're just updating our information.
Any other discussion? Clark, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business? Citizens request, Billy Busby, plans for youth activities?
He's not here.
Remarks by the mayor and the council. Mayor, you want to start?
Yes, sir. I appreciate that. First, I'd like to say a little bit about the money. We do have a little money. They're always talking about doing projects. I wish we had about three times what we got. We could do about whatever we wanted to. But we try to keep about three months in reserve of operating expenses, and I'm teasing with them, but we haven't had any layoffs. We've had a lot of jobs added. We've had projects in every district. We've upgraded a lot of buildings and parks. You know, I'm glad with where we are. We had a tremendous $78 million debt when we got in office. And, but it's, it's looking up. Things are looking up, and I'm hoping here, usually when things are booming in a lot of areas, we're on the low end of boom, and when it gets bad, we stay on the upper end of bad, which sort of around the middle, and that's a good thing. That's the way it used to be in, in the housing around here. But we want to get started off right, and I think we're going to, and I appreciate the council's support on everything we try to do. So I did go on a little trip last week to New York. I know why I don't live up there now. Anyway, it's a good place to visit, had a good time, but the youth orchestra and the dance conservatory went up and had a performance of The Nutcracker at John Jay College in New York, and there was about 150 people. And I'd been planning it for about two years and trying to raise money and get everybody to go, but they did an excellent job. The auditorium there, we were all there, but there was about 900 people that bought tickets in New York that came to see the performance, and I can't brag on it enough. We didn't lose any kids. Everybody had a great time. We went up on Monday and came back Saturday night. We got back about nine o'clock Saturday night. And it was sort of strange looking on TV and seeing all the things at Times Square when the night before we was out there taking pictures. But they did, they did a good performance, and they represented our city well, and we appreciate the work that, that all the people who were involved in that do. Thank you.
Mayor, you sure you? I thought I saw you on TV.
That was the naked cowboy I saw.
Oh, okay.
I really did. See, I've heard about him on radio when I saw him.
Okay.
Billy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to say it's good to see the turnout that we have here today here at City Council. It just goes to show you that when there is a topic of interest to our citizens in Gadsden, we will show up, and we will express our opinion, and we are to be recognized for that. I thank you all for being here today, and I hope that everybody will take something away from this meeting that, you know, this council is working pretty well together. Yes, there are gonna be differences. There will always be differences, but as a, as a whole, as a group of seven, I think we work well together, and that is for the betterment of the community, the betterment of Gadsden, not just East Gadsden, and not just North Side, and not just West Side. But when we speak of this, when we speak of representation, we speak of representing this city as a whole, even though it's divided into seven sections where each person has his own individual responsibility, we are all still responsible to the whole total city of Gadsden. And I thank you for coming up to, coming out today to express yourself. I'm sure that we will talk about this for days to come, but be, be assured that what we have done, we think is in the best interest of the city of Gadsden. Thank you, and I hope, and I hope everybody enjoys 2012, you're back here with us, and have a good and prosperous 2012, and come back to City Council next Tuesday. Thank you.
Robert?
You know, that all sounds good, and I thought that, you know, we would be very truthful and very cooperative in the new year. As you can see right now, there's a vacant seat here, and I always like to pick my fights and do one fight at a time. This fight's over with, so let's move to the next fight. Councilman Williams have a problem right now. He has a new job. He's asked his council to consider going into meeting in the evenings. He've also asked his council to consider meeting every other meeting in the evening. The council was polled. Only one person agreed to do either or, and that was me. That's all I have.
I think with the camera that's on us back there, people have about, what, four or five times a day to see what happens at the council meeting. We tried them one time. Robert was here when we tried them at night, and we had a hard time getting enough people to the workshop session to do anything. I voted not to do either one. I think every other, every other week is not often enough to get everything done that needs to be done, and at the same time, I just don't think it's necessary to have an afternoon or night meeting when people can see what we do and come and let her, and call us and let us know what they don't like about it. So I hope you will look at the television, Channel 99. I don't, what is it, every three hours it shows it? The mayor evidently is doing the right thing. He got reelected by keeping the money intact. I would hope that he would give us a little bit of credit for having the intestinal fortitude to pass another 1% sales tax so that, and also that, that the fact that we did that and we have the businesses that we have, even though I think we ought to have a lot more, and I hope this new development is gonna be as successful as I, as everybody hopes, and I'm sure it will. Gadsden's sitting in a very strategic place. We've got counties all around us that people come here to shop. We need as many retail outlets as we can possibly have, and that brings in the sales tax, when that sales tax is what helps put that money in the bank. I'm for you, Mayor, and I'll keep voting with you. Bill?
I'd just like to say thank you to everybody coming out today. I think we came up with a redistricting plan that divides the population up in several, in seven different districts in the appropriate way, where everybody has about the same number of people in their districts, was the whole thing was behind, the whole plan was. I would like to say that as far as meeting at night, I have no problem with that, but the problem we run into is when you ask department heads to stay over at night and not pay them, it's, it puts a hardship on the department heads if they're gonna be at the council meetings. That's one of the things that I, I saw that, that it's not such a good idea to meet at night, but I have no problem meeting at night myself, but it would work a hardship on some of the department heads that have to stay over with no compensation. I'm looking forward to this new year. It's gonna be a good year. We've got some good things happening to us this year, and I would like to say thank you to all the council members. I consider every one of them a good friend of mine, and I think we work well together. We might not agree on everything all the time, but if you notice, we vote together just about 99% of the time. We, we all work well together, and I'm, I'm proud of every one of them and, and glad to call them a good friend. So thank you, council members.
Johnny?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to let everybody know that what we passed here today, the redistricting we passed today, it's gonna go before the Justice Department. Just because we passed it don't mean that's gonna fly. They'll have to look at it, and they'll have to be the one that makes the final decision. And I know there's probably gonna be three or four plans sitting up there, but they're the one that makes the final decision. We just voted on the plan that we thought was best, this council did today. I do want to say that I never went down there and tweeted any plans that ever was redone, anything like that. I never tweeted them that all these guys do their own thing, what they wanted to do. I looked at mine, I kept my district like I wanted it. I never tweeted anything, so I just want that to be on the record by saying that. I didn't go behind anybody's back or anything. But I do have some good news. I know everybody's ready for some good news. The city of Gadsden yesterday, the state, they didn't give us a drug card, but all city employees that have seated guests and insurance can now get their generic drugs covered at 100% subject to a $5 copay. When you go to participating pharmacy, all you have to pay is $5 for your generic drugs. That started yesterday, and that, Mayor, that's probably gonna save some of our employees a lot of money by doing that right there. And your other medicine will be at 80%, just like it always has after you reach your deductible. But I just want to bring that up so maybe the city employees have something to be happy about this year.
Man?
I'm just happy to have the VA, aren't you, Billy?
Yes, indeed.
And I don't understand half of it, but they're there when I need them. That's all I care about. Listen, y'all, Brian Harbison's mother passed away, and I do want to send our condolences out to him and the family, and our prayers as well. Brian is an integral part of this city, absolutely, and I think it's well that we, we'd be with him during this time. Having meetings at night, I didn't run for office to meet at night. We met at 11 o'clock on today, and that's what I looked at, inconvenience in the department heads. I looked at that. That's not good. But basically, I like the way it is. Robert, Bob is right, and in respect to, you can tune in every day. I've got a telephone that rings 35 times a day, which I welcome because that's where I get my information from, and I think we're well represented in having that time at 11 o'clock on Tuesday mornings. I was gonna say something about this other thing, but I believe I'll save it for the rest of the year. I believe we're gonna have a good year. Things are gonna come up. We're gonna disagree, but I'm like Bill. I like everybody on this council, but I kind of watch Robert at once. Robert's your friend of mine. I got you, man, but I had to say something like that.
We keep our eyes on each other.
Robert told me going down the elevator one time on election day, he said, now, you do want me to come out and be in your corner, don't you? And I said, uh-uh. Public perception means the whole lot.
I'm gonna be your campaign manager.
There you go. Oh, my Lord, it's on television.
I'm gonna make sure you don't get elected.